Okay, welcome to our city council's special meeting. And kind of fancy introductions here, want to thank you for coming in and position. I think we all have some questions for you. I think let somebody else start off, they would like to find, would you like to jump in with some questions?
Well, we were sort of chatting and just to try to get an understanding of what your interest is in representing Larkspur on the aging.
Um, well, I, to be honest with you, I just saw the, I got the email and it said something about aging commission Marin County. And I have always been interested in welfare of older adults. It probably goes back to having a really good grandmother and having an especially close relationship with her. And just hanging out with her, you know, I just love my grandmother. And so I've never shied away from older people. And I lost my hearing in my early 30s, no one knows why. And I got, I was saved by cochlear implants, I was saved by technology. But I had something that a lot of older people, I was thrown into a community with people who are much older, who had a disability. That was more likely to happen in their 70s and 80s and I joined a bunch of self-help programs. And because of my youth, I became the secretary, the treasurer, the president, that, you know,
it always
it was running all these programs, right? And so I was, I had a lot of friends in their 70s, 80s and and I could be very helpful to them in a lot of ways. At the same time, I went back to school and got my master's in clinical psychology. And so I was working with older people on a volunteer basis. I was learning about how to work with people clinically. And then I graduated and worked with people that had memory loss. And over that tenure period, I have met, I've seen 25 clients a week. So I have met a lot of Marin County seniors over the course of 10 years. And I have met people from the very wealthy end to people who are homeless. And I have been saddened and sometimes appalled at how the people on the low end are living. And not to say that there aren't things available to them, but they don't know how to access them. They need a lot of help.
It's one thing the commission on aging tries to do is help facilitate resources for community members.
Well, that's what I imagined. And, and it's a big problem. Um, so I saw that as a big problem and I became a cognitive therapist slash social worker and there aren't enough hours in the day to do all of that. So anyway, the opportunity to do something, you know, not in my own room, just waning and trying to, you know, plug holes here and there, just as an individual who's trying to be a good citizen, to have an opportunity in a, in an organizational in an organization like this would be a great idea.
Yeah, I guess I'll tie onto that. Um, so I first of all, thanks again, really, I've been trying to tend to meetings myself and, you know, I'm just thinking specifically about your experience with the clients that seems like it was in thousands. And, you know, the memory loss issue is going to go up to like 10 or 14,000 in the next decade or so. So, so I think that's really important. My, my question is, um, what, you know, as a professional, you know, as a member of the community, you know, and I know you're just kind of putting your foot in the water here, but, but what ideas do you have? Like, what do you think that the county could do? Like, have you, have you thought of some things, you know, where you'd want to advocate? Or areas where you'd want to look into to advocate?
Well, you know, my area, my area of expertise is brain health. I don't know that much about the commission. I don't know what you do in terms of education and brain health. Um, there's not a lot. It's, it's a new subject. We never really thought about our brains as an organ or body until the last maybe decade or so. Um, and so, I mean, that's an area where I think we could start to educate seniors, it's not too late. You know, when you're 65, there are still things that you can do. So that's one area. Um, you know, again, I, I really need to learn about your organization, learn about what you do. I have a lot of questions. And so, you know.
I mean, I'll just say, so preventative education for seniors, I think that's a great answer. I mean, it's a question, but the part of it is the Health and Human Services Department, which is a third of the county budget, has an aging commission with, with leadership and about 15 to 20 reps from the county would be one of them. And they often, you know, try to get input as to what they can be doing and that feeds up to the HHS director. So, so, you know, I think the Alzheimer's and dementia issue is huge. And, you know, someone with a professional opinion, so I'd be happy to talk to you offline about that.
There's also a real movement in Marin and we're kind of on the, we're on the tail end of it because Larkspur is one of the last cities to be recognized as an age-friendly community. And there's a real countywide emphasis on being age-friendly as a county. And I know that the commission on aging helps with certain of those policy ideas and decisions and back gathering for that. It's something Gabe and I've been trying to work on and Gabe and I are going to try to tag team it this next year to really get Larkspur up and running in that. And you would be a friendly source for what the county is to.
Yeah.
You answered all that question that I had.
No, I mean, you seem highly qualified and I feel like you have a lot of experience in this area. Can you maybe talk a little bit about situations or experience that you have working with other people like on a team? Because this is, this is, I think, a pretty large commission with people throughout the county and probably a diverse, diverse, you know, panel of viewpoints and perspectives and trying to prioritize, you know, what needs to be done. Maybe give a little, give us a little bit of flavor for some experience with me.
Well, you know, as a therapist, I work alone.
Right, right.
Yeah. Um, but I work with all, I never know who's coming in the door, right? So it can be any ethnicity. Mostly I have older adults, but you know, sometimes I can have someone young that comes in. I mean, I really, I see more in Marin, to be honest, I see more of a socioeconomic variety of people than I do ethnic, cultural. I mean, most people are white. But um, I don't foresee that I would have any problems working with anybody really, as long as they were respectful and yeah, I have, you know, I've had other careers and I've worked in college and graduate schooling groups and I know how to get along.
Yeah, no, my question was more about collaboration, not, yeah. Yeah, I didn't want to imply
I'm not pushing, have it.
I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that, but yeah, just more about, you know, collaboration.
Yeah, I mean, I think especially being new to something. Um, you know, I would definitely be kind of take a backseat and then beginning about, you know, collaborating and sharing ideas.
And I think that in the last couple of years, we really haven't had a report out from our representative at the aging mission. But we were talking about that, how important it is going forward that we kind of get a rate, an update once a year or something from what the commission is doing. Not a big formal written report, but just let us know what's going on as a representative and how we as a council can help support that kind of the work that the commission is doing.
So is this is a new position, the person?
There's been a woman who's been our representative for a long. So she
So why don't you, what, yeah, what kind of changes are you looking for? What is, what do you, what would you like to say? You thought of?
I mean, I'll start, I think, you know, just what we were getting into. Probably a third, you know, even 40% of our town is over 65 or will be in the next decade. So I think, you know, we're at a point where the preventative, you know, part that you were talking about, education, you know, distributing a resource information, trying to get facts to inform policy. I think, you know, the time is, is now. And so I would love to see someone who's just really willing to get in there and, you know, there, there's a lot of, of, you know, resources at the county. As I said, you know, there, there's 250 to 300 million dollars in your spend on Health and Human Services. It's, it's our biggest expenditure as a county. So, you know, making sure that we spend that money well and address and, and especially the equity issue. And I think most people don't realize that we have a real underclass. You know, there are a lot of people in big homes and they have lots of resources, but I would put the number at 15 to 20% who need some help and identifying them and getting programs to them. I mean, I think, I think it's an immense job, I mean, an immense, important job.
I really feel, I, I love Larkspur and I've lived here for, I've been in Marin for almost 30 years and at Larkspur, 10 or 12. Um, and I, I really would like it to be a welcoming and safe place for seniors. And I'd like to contribute in whatever way I can, I really would.
It's wonderful. Yeah, we'll just add on to what Gabe was saying. When I'm out talking to people, I think there's a lot of interest in just programs for people who are aging in place. Not necessarily that they have disabilities or, but they're, you know, we're all aging and people want more social interactions, more social activities, connection with other people in the community. Yes. And so I came across a lot of that when I was out talking to people. And, you know, they wanted to know what I was going to do in terms of just age-friendly, you know, initiatives. And some of it is, you know, we have better biking and pedestrian pathways, so it's safer. But other things too, we're just, you know, you know, these are people who, like I said, it didn't really, you know, we're all aging and they really wanted just more connection with people around them. And so what can we do to help seniors in our community to just feel more connected? So to the extent that you have ideas for that or that you can bring, you know, when you're out talking to people and you can bring ideas to council, I think we would be interested.
Yeah, and I think that our businesses are interested in that too. You know, like I know the Lark Theater does some things for seniors and you know that? They had some swinging singles.
I didn't go to that.
I didn't either, but I mean, they, they try.
Yeah.
They try to do things anyway. So, yeah.
I think we're all pretty comfortable. I, I just wanted to add that I am also looking for somebody who is kind of a liaison that, that can come to council. It can be more than once a year. You know, where you're like, hey, I've been in this, working this population. Here are some things, here are some recommendations that we as a city could do to improve the lives of this community, you know, steps we can take. Cause I think that's going to be an important role, which you have, is you're going to be
Right.
You know.
What, what towns do you think do a good job?
Port of Madera, in my, in my experience.
So do you know their commissioner?
Yeah, and they have a, they have a very active age-friendly community. They had an intergenerational center that they had developed before, I mean, I can help you with that later.
Yeah, so, so let's, let's steal their ideas.
Yeah. Of course.
I mean, yeah, I mean, let, let me talk to their person and see what she did or he did.
Great.
Okay.
All right, I, still, we have any more questions, but I think that I want to speak at a turn, but it seems like a good fit. So thank you for your work here, for taking the time and we will go to work together in the future.
Thank you.
So she made process goes to said Alison, actually on your next agenda, so August 7th, the appointment will be on the agenda. Just got to him.
And so you'll hear from her after.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome everybody to the city council meeting for July 17th. Uh, let us start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Andre.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Way.
Here.
Mayor Candell.
I am here. Uh, having completed that, let's stand for the pledge if you are able.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on its own, in this small liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for joining us with that. The next item we have is public comment. Public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to make public comment on something not on the agenda, come on up to the mic, let's see what you got to say.
Those stairs. Uh, hi, council, Mike Bristow with the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to come and thank you on behalf of the chamber for giving us 75,000 of the 10% of the TOT money. We really appreciate that and promise that it will go a long way. Um, one question in terms of order. How and when do we need this to get to you?
I don't know what this is.
This is the contract that I was sent for that.
Ah, okay. Um, I would ask staff about the procedure for that.
So should the council decide to adopt this as part of the consent calendar this evening? Staff will be in touch to complete the contract.
Yes, staff meeting. But where do I sign it, I guess is my question to you, after they sign it?
So council, council approves the authorization for the amount of funds and then the city clerk will send, will send the contract for signature.
Fantastic. Thank you all.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening, council members. My name is Justin and I'm a resident of the Larkspur community. I'm here tonight to seek clarification for municipal code 954060, section H. Uh, the code states that noise sources exceeding the prescribed standards that are associated with construction, repair, remodeling, demolition or paving or of any real property, including noise of vehicles, equipment associated with these activities occurring during the falling periods, seven to six, Monday through Friday, nine to five on Saturdays and nothing on Sundays or holidays. I would like to understand this rule a little bit better. Does this pertain to contractors only? Does this, for, in regards to the Sunday day? Um, does this refer to contractors only? Uh, power tools of a certain decibel? Uh, as a resident that works a job nine to five, I don't have a lot of time to work on my own property throughout the months and I, if I wanted to mix a bag of concrete or like screw in a couple posts or something, I would be in violation of that noise ordinance and subject to the police showing up, which has happened and potentially getting a fine, which has been threatened. I am, I want to understand what you, the council members, understand to be reasonable activities for a homeowner to participate in on a Sunday. And I would like to seek your guidance on how to proceed with projects and maintaining my property while staying within the guidelines. Uh, for some context, I think that's important. I have a neighbor that is using this ruling to intimidate and harass me every time I work through law enforcement. He's called on me a number of times and every time the police officers have responded, they've been nothing but very nice and very helpful. Um, and I want to, and they're very understanding, knowing that I'm not a contractor and I'm just a resident. So if you can provide me some clarification or guidance or someone I can talk to, someone who is in charge of enforcement of that, it, it just seems like the ruling is kind of loose, says any construction noise. And I think that was designed for more or less a contractor and not like a homeowner, so.
All right, so, so Justin, thank you for, for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Let me say that as council, we're not allowed to respond to public comments directly. It's, it's not a give and take, it's more for, for your comments and we appreciate you making that. Uh, I would, I assume, refer you to the city attorney as this is an interpretation of a legal statute. But I will ask the acting city manager her thoughts.
Yes, please.
I don't know if I'm the acting city manager anymore, just emceeing the meeting, uh, not even emceeing, running the meeting. I think the, the best course of action here, because there's some specifics brought up, is to leave your information with the city clerk and staff will be in touch with you shortly.
Okay, yeah, I could do that. Thank you so much, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, yes?
Good evening. My name's Ted Horton, live at 14 Willow Avenue and have since 1995. I wanted to congratulate the city council on establishing your ad hoc committee to better understand serenity. A 40-plus year old, over-leveraged property that loses millions each year that the city of Larkspur is host and part owner of. I have four questions that the committee may want to work with. The city continues to provide essential services, police, fire, paramedic to serenity. Yet this property hasn't paid a dime in taxes since 2020. Larkspur just renegotiated higher contracts with police and fire. How are we going to pay for these new contracts? Why do bond investors propose to be bailed out before Larkspur taxpayers? Are they really telling us that we have to defund our police, defund our fire department? The bailout proposal piles more debt on top of a property that can't pay its existing debt. Is CalTA accelerating, draining the value out of this apartment property and thus leave us Larkspur taxpayers holding the bag? Who do you recruit to help you understand both what the past four years of fees paid versus the affordable housing benefits provided are, together with common sense options going forward? When you find yourself in a hole, getting deeper by $3 million every year, the first thing you do is stop digging. Thank you.
All right, Ted, thank you for that. And again, we can't respond directly, but there is a subcommittee working on that issue. And we will inform the public as we move forward on that and keep everybody informed. Uh, other public comments? Seeing none. I will close public comments. We will move on to item three presentations of which there are none. So we will slide into item number four, the consent calendar. Uh, let me ask the council, is there anyone that would like to discuss an item on the consent calendar? Uh, so we have, uh, let's ask staff, has there been an item pulled from the consent calendar at this point?
Oh, no, I'm, excuse me, I misspoke, it's 8.1 is for this.
Okay, okay, so anyone on, uh, council, uh, would like to pull any item? Nope, I'll put it to the public. Anybody in the public like to discuss any item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And what would that motion be?
Pass all items under the consent count.
Okay, we have a motion to pass the items on the consent calendar, do we have a second?
Sure, second, I'll second that.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andre.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way.
Yes.
Mayor Candell.
Yes. Okay, consent calendar is passed. Item number five, city managers or report, could we have a report, please?
Yes, I only have two items for the council this evening. So one, I'd like to let the community know that the filing period to run for city council began on July 15th. That's for two city council member seats for full term for four years and one city council member seat for a partial term of two years. The deadline for filing is August 9th at 5:00 PM and the nomination period may be extended to August 14th. If at least one of the incumbent slots has not been filled. If you're interested in more information, it's on the homepage of the city website or you can contact the city clerk for more information. Second item I have for folks who read the paper is the Marin IJ ran an article about our new library building and what's coming. I appreciate lots of inquiries from the community as a fellow impatient person who's very excited about our new building. So I just wanted to provide an update that the, um, the design review team has been working on finalizing the plans. Um, it will be brought to the, it is scheduled to be brought to the planning commission for a meeting in September and we are scheduling an informational presentation for council and the community, um, tracking for one of the city council meetings in September. So stay tuned for more information on that. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Uh, then we have, uh, city council member reports. Uh, is there anybody that would like to give us a report?
Uh, just go, just real quick, I was at the SMART board meeting today. And the good news is that for the fiscal year 2024, SMART had 850,000 riders. Um, the numbers have been going up, you know, 20, 25% every month. Um, it's free seniors, free youth and 13% of the riders are bicyclists. So, um, so anyway, it's a board that I had very mixed feelings about joining and I'm, I'm encouraged to see that all the promotions are happening, they're really trying to serve Larkspur now with the Connect Shuttle. And, uh, the board seems very responsive, so that's all I have.
Okay, and the only thing I have is apparently at the Bonner Shopping Center, they have, I believe, Wine Wednesdays. I don't know if this is through the, the chamber or not, but I was just there before we came here, not having wine, but, uh, having my Jamba Juice, but there was live music and I believe they're doing that every week. So just a community public service announcement, uh, it's available if anyone wants to check it out. All right, having said that, uh, closing, sorry, more. All right, next, uh, we have public hearings of which we have none and we are flying. The next item is the business item for which many of you are here. Uh, this is to approve the city's response to the 2023-2024 Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report entitled With Power Comes Responsibility. Use under age 16 operating class two e-bikes, a safety risk. Can we have a staff report, please?
Uh, Shannon O'Hare, Assistant City Manager for the city of Larkspur, I'll be providing your report this evening. And I'd like to invite our police chief, Mike Norton, up to assist me in this. Um, at the last council meeting, we brought as a consent item, the response to the grand jury report on e-bikes. And there was a lot of interest from the community and the council about having a more thorough discussion about e-bikes in general, as well as the city's response to the grand jury report. So tonight, we've provided, we're going to provide a presentation and go through the grand jury's report and recommendations one by one, and I'm going to be relying on our chief here to really talk about what's been going on in Marin over the past year plus, working with the schools, working with our communities around, um, the great power and responsibility that comes with youth operating e-bikes. So with that, we'll go ahead and start the agenda, uh, the, uh, presentation. And for this presentation, if there are any comments or questions during the presentation, feel, feel free to ask those questions as we go through it. Um, especially from the council, rather than saving it towards then, so we can respond to it. For, so for folks who may not have read the report, left, back, uh, cover to cover, on April 22nd, 2024, the grand jury released the report. It calls for a response from a number of jurisdictions, including the city, for the, both the findings of the report, these are the factual findings and the recommendations of what to do in response to this issue. We presented, we presented our findings on June 5th and after hearing public comments and discussing it, we were asked to provide a more depth, in-depth response. So we'll go through a little bit more quickly, the findings that the grand jury had, so, because we agreed with all of them, but for the benefit of the community, we'll go through them and Michael, um, our, the chief will provide a couple of, um, a couple of extra points and then we will really spend a lot of time on the recommendations, which is where most of the questions lie. So the first finding of the grand jury was that an increasing number of e-bikes accidents involving used under the age of 16 presents a public health and safety danger in Marin. The city agrees with this. Um, all e-bike accidents present a public health and safety danger. Um, and particularly the operation of class two e-bikes by operators under the age of 16 poses a significant risk to operators, passengers and pedestrians in Marin. The emerging and increasing safety issues, finding number three, related to class, class two e-bikes um, has not been addressed by Marin County or the municipalities in a completely uniform manner. We also agree with that, but when we get to the recommendations, the chief will provide some more context about what we have been doing as a region, both working with our schools, working with communities and coordinating as agencies in both an ad hoc, informal manner and with each other on bordering jurisdictions. And then, uh, finding number four, for all practical purposes, the state of California has abdicated its responsibility to regulate the use of class two e-bikes, leaving it up to the county of Marin and Marin municipalities to create their own regulations. We agreed with this finding, since the grand jury released this report, there's actually been some proposed state legislation. So things are moving at the state level, but there's nothing adopted now and there was certainly nothing, nothing adopted when they were doing the research for this report.
Can I ask you just in the F three? I mean, it must be that they're not been addressed by Marin County or the municipalities in a uniform manner. Did the grand jury give any example of a ordinance that has been implied in a uniform manner across multiple jurisdictions?
No.
Okay.
And I won't, I won't speak exactly for the grand jury, but what they alluded to many times in the report is that there's not essentially a a uniform ordinance, right? We were specifically relating to class-two e-bikes and youth across, across all jurisdictions. Then finding five, the the funding to continue e-bike specific safety and training programs provided by the Marin County Bicycle Coalition are not sustainable without new sources of funding. Based on the report, we agree with that finding. And then the the last, the last one, Marin County Public Schools are not currently able to implement additional bicycle safety training programs for students beyond what has been offered for safe routes to schools for many years, and we agreed with that, with that finding.
Can I ask you a question on that? Why, why can't they? Marin, Marin County Public Schools are not currently able to. Why are they not able to?
Based on the report's funding, funding constraints, just general funding. All right, now on to the fun part, recommendations and responses. So recommendation number one to the city was that by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, the Board of Supervisors, each municipality in Marin should take all the steps necessary to adopt an ordinance with regard to class-two e-bikes, that the minimum a number of provisions. And the city's response to this was that it won't be implemented because it is not warranted, and I'm going to ask the chief to provide some additional context about why exactly it's not warranted, including a a key distinction between class-one, class-two e-bikes and e-bikes that are sold as class-two e-bikes that actually may not meet that definition.
Okay, so this is always fun to talk about. I'm not going to read that because it's a lot, but I'll I'll give you the 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 simple version, and it it may gloss over something, and I understand that. But so basically, several years ago, the state passed legislation, and it defined what an e-bike is, electric bicycle, e-bike, whatever you want to call it. And it's a very narrow definition. And to be considered an e-bike, and there's a lot of misunderstanding about this, and I'll even show, I'll give you a few examples of the misunderstandings too. Because I went through it myself over the last year or two, thinking something was an e-bike, and then realizing a few months ago that, oh, those aren't e-bikes at all, and I'll I'll talk about that a little bit. So the state made a definition on e-bikes, and they talked about class-one, class-two, and three. The simple version is class-one e-bikes, they're pedal-assisted, only there's no throttle of any type. And they have to cap out at twenty miles an hour that the assist is supposed to turn off. Throttle-assisted e-bikes are class-two, and they also can't provide power past twenty miles an hour. Class-three e-bikes are, there is no throttle, but they can provide power up to, I think it's twenty-eight miles an hour. We don't actually see that many of those. We mainly see a lot of class-one e-bikes with adults. It's very popular with mountain biking, and if you are to see any guy going up hills generally, like serious mountain bikers, they're on a class-one style. We see a lot, we actually see some, but not many, class-two e-bikes, even with the minors, and I'll explain why. To be considered an e-bike, several things have to be met, and let's just focus on class-two e-bikes because that's what we're talking about today. To be considered a class-two e-bike, there's pretty much like three prongs. It has an electrical motor, and that motor cannot at any point emit more than seven hundred and fifty watts. So it's basically like a one horsepower gas motor. That's roughly about the equivalent. If the motor can emit more than that, it's by definition not a seven hundred and fifty watt or less motor. So that's the big one that we run into a lot of. The second thing is when using the throttle, under no circumstances can the throttle provide power for you to go more than twenty miles an hour. So if you see someone and we're running light radar on the street and a bicycle goes by at twenty-five, thirty-five miles an hour, our officers can know right away that that's not an e-bike if the person's not pedaling, because we know it's a throttle going in advance of that. And then the final one is per, this came out, I think, a few years after the initial definition, but per California law, all manufacturers of legal e-bikes in the state must affix a sticker saying whether they're a class-one, class-two, or class-three e-bike. So what we run into and what we're mainly dealing with out there is vehicles that are not e-bikes. Everyone looks at it and goes, oh, that's an e-bike. That was an e-bike accident. These kids are going crazy on e-bikes, and it's a, it's a technicality. But ninety percent, if not higher, of what we're dealing with, with bad behavior, of what we see and what we're responding to are either motorcycles that have electric motors. They're not, they don't even pedal. That's our number one issue we're running into in terms of speed, recklessness, and accidents. No different than like a dirt bike that ten years ago you would buy and you'd hear it, man, it's ripping down the street. Clearly illegal, right? No license plate, no license, no motorcycle helmet. That's a lot of what we're seeing, and that's kind of in the, I'd say, the high school age kids, that's a little bit older. And then the number one thing we're running into with like the middle school kids is you, some people call it a moped, you can call it a minibike, there's a lot of definitions, it depends on the motor size, but they're definitely not e-bikes. And they kind of look like those old seventies mopeds, if you know what I'm talking about. It's kind of got a banana seat. Okay, thank you. See, you're in trouble. Yeah, so, and those, they do pedal. A lot of times you'll see kids riding, not pedaling, but they technically can pedal. And the problem with, like I said, ninety to ninety-five percent of the ones we're dealing with with those is threefold. There's hundreds of brands out there, some are more prevalent than others, you know, I would say more than half or one specific manufacturer, and I'll speak to that one. First off, when you first turn the bike on, it may or may not be seven hundred and fifty watts max, but that's at fifty percent power. So when you just toggle up on it, by their website, if you go to it, it'll say that most of their bikes can go in excess of two thousand watts, which is getting close to three horsepower, so like three times what's legal. So just based on that, they're not e-bikes that they're riding around on. Second of all, is we've on numerous occasions clocked those with no pedaling going in excess of thirty miles an hour. So that's more than twenty, also not an e-bike because of that. And thirdly, there is a sticker on these bikes that say class-two, and they're clearly not class-two e-bikes. Now, some of these stickers can be purchased online at eBay or Amazon, very easy to find, but what we're finding is they're actually coming from some of the manufacturers with those on.
All right, chief, can I, can I ask you, I have a question?
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is that these are not e-bikes, so regulations aimed at e-bikes or class-two e-bikes wouldn't affect these particular problems that we're dealing with.
That is my understanding, and that's why when I was asked for some input on this report, I said it's not warranted because the the issues we're facing today. Now, it could change in a year, because we are trying to crack down on these, and maybe there's a transition to legal class-two e-bikes that are causing all sorts of problems and accidents. But I'll speak quickly just just the the safety aspect of it. There is data that's out there that's being heavily relied on by local and state agencies regarding e-bike accidents. I can only speak to our jurisdiction. There's a few that they claim have occurred in our jurisdiction, and I've gone back and looked and talked to my officers. And I believe all, except maybe one or two, did not involve an e-bike, even though they're listed as e-bikes because they were these mopeds or motorcycles.
So, so can you tell us, I mean, the community's concern? I don't think anybody cares what it's called.
Right.
The community's concern is that there are kids on motorized vehicles that are dangerous to the kids and to the community. And what can we do to protect the kids in the community, regardless of what we call these things? So, so assuming you are correct, these are not e-bikes, and legislating rules about e-bikes would be completely ineffective because it wouldn't apply to these. What regulations are in effect that could be used to stop this problem? And is there something that we as a council can do to pass additional regulations in order to help law enforcement respond to this problem and protect community safety?
Our current issue is not enforcing the vehicle code, which we have been. We did a lot of education upfront several months ago. Our, I don't want to beat a, beat a dead horse here, but it's really a staffing issue. We're down a lot of bodies. We're kind of doing the best we can, but we are getting ready to ramp it up again. And also, this is a confusing issue. It's not as simple as some people think. So we've had to do a lot of training and retraining of our officers to get their comfort level up. But we've moved past the education, and just if you're not aware of the education, we, I personally sent out two multi-page letters to every like every parent of every student in our jurisdiction, public and private schools, at the end of the school year, educating them exactly on what we talked about tonight. One was related to the motorcycles, and one was to the moped slash minibikes, and advising them that, you know, if you have one, bought one of these, your kid needs to stop unless it's registered with the DMV, they're wearing a helmet, they have a license, all of that. We have been taking more enforcement up to citing the, the, some of the minors and even towing some of the vehicles. It, we've seen a little downtick in the amount of the motorcycles out there because that was our first focus due to the fact that they are actually going ten to fifteen miles an hour faster than everything else. And I'll, I'll get into some of the, if you want, I can address some of the other things we've done now. The big one is the schools keep popping up as a a topic. My experience with the two superintendents I've been dealing with, one is the Tam High School District, which for would be Redwood and Archie Williams and Tam High School. So my concerns are Redwood and Archie. And the Corder Medera Larkspur School District, which the main concern is Hall Middle School. And I've had some contact with the chief of Fairfax, who's working with White Hill too. They've been really good, and what we pitched at the end of the school year was doing a really robust registration program starting in the fall. They're working really hard on that, and I've seen the draft for the high school. It's honestly way better than something I would come up. It's very thorough. It looks like they'll be able to handle most of it on their own, but where there's a resource as well. And I think the combination of added enforcement this summer, we're trying to send a message, including the beginning of the school year, plus that registration will help a lot. Yes, these kids are riding them on the weekends, but what we really see is the mass number is going to and from school. And we're hoping when parents realize they're not going to be able to use that as a transportation method, we can at least prevent more of these from being purchased. So we're, there's really some good progress coming there. So the education, there's been that. And I've also been in contact with the district attorney's office regarding that consumer fraud issue. So hopefully they will look into that issue. We don't have any dealers in our, in our jurisdiction at all, but there are some other ones in the county, and I'm hoping that the DA may get involved with that as well. If they're, they're marketing to and selling things that by definition aren't what they are, it's consumer fraud.
That, that, thanks for that explanation, because I think the education component is so key, and I, at the police council, we've talked about that. I got to thinking about an issue that we struggled with a number of years ago, which was so, which was adolescent drinking and parties and the social host ordinance, which was created as an an extra tool for law enforcement to have some penalty for underage parties that were happening, and it was, you know, a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine or whatever we all jurisdictionally agreed on. Do you think something like that may be a tool that could help control, get parental or parental buy-in because?
That's, that's a political question, you know, it's not really in my lane, so I'll stay in my lane.
Okay.
I will say that looking at the draft proposed legislation that's coming from the state, it has very light penalties. The last draft I saw, which was a couple of weeks ago, imposed a twenty-five dollar penalty. I don't think that's going to do anything. That's my two cents. And I think it can, would be waived if you attended a safety class. What we're dealing with right now, just to be really clear, it's not a, an education or safety issue. It's you're driving illegal vehicles out on the streets, sidewalks, and trams, and we need to stop those. And once we get a hold of that, if we're seeing a problem with class-two or class-one, I think that would be the appropriate time to look at legislating them. But I, I think at the same time, what this is happening at the state level and with our grand jury, I mean, I do commend them for recognizing there's a problem out there, and it's, it's overwhelming for, it's not an enforcement only, and that's why I went to the schools to really help me with this. Because we're just, we're overwhelmed. Every jurisdiction, at least in Marin, is overwhelmed with these. And it's definitely spreading throughout the state. So we were kind of the tip of the spear. I think we were some of the first to get them a few years ago, and maybe some places in Orange County along the beaches, but now, if you travel up and down the state, I've, I just went on a little vacation, and I saw them in Gilroy, all over the place. I saw them in Monterey. So there, I think there's going to be some more robust state stuff coming.
I had a couple of questions. Well, first, Chief, I want to thank you, the the school effort. I, I remember I saw some of your emails to Tam Union, and I think just on my own, I I biked through the campus and counted seventeen Super Seventy-Three's on on the campus. I want to go back to where where Scott started, you know, we don't care about the definition. I want to say I do care about the definition. What are these? Are these mopeds? I mean, how are they legally classified? Is it legally classified as a motorcycle, a moped? You know, so they're not e-bikes, we got that, but what are they?
Which every, all the different things we're seeing are.
Well, let's just, you said, let's focus on class-two. So let's say a Super Seventy-Three, it's been souped up, it's got, you know, roughly three horsepower, twenty-two hundred watts.
I've gotten, you know, with one of my traffic officers, we've gone back and forth. I, I see, I view them as mopeds. He's probably a little smarter on the subject than me, and he says they're actually minibikes. Either way, they're not legal, unless they're registered with DMV. And to be honest with you, DMV is not registering any of these at this point, on the same way they, I don't believe they'd register like a quad, an ATV. I don't think you can get a license plate on that in California and drive it down the street, so.
Okay, so, so in a way, the law is on your side. I mean, if if you wanted to, you know, take it to the mat, then you could, you know, basically, there's some real penalties already on the books.
Yeah, we have been unfortunate, so it's just not in the amount I would like due to our staffing and to the point that we're really making that much of a difference, unfortunately.
Okay, and that brings me to my second, you know, my my only other point, which is, you know, we, you know, I remember you sitting in these chambers a few years ago with, with the parking situation in the Larkspur Marina, you know, is is probably six, twelve months ago, and there, I think we said, look, we only have so many sworn officers, we're short-staffed. The one solution where we could come in our swim lane is to say, look, we're not giving you, you know, three chances, you know, you get a fine, and it's serious, and we may get pushback, and I'm wondering if that's, if that, and I'm also asking the council, you know, if so there isn't a question, the Marin Grand Jury may have misclassified this from, but but we we have illegal vehicles on the street, and as a city, we could take it to the state limit of what the law allows us to do, impound the bike, you know, very high penalties. I mean, in principle, we could do that.
We have, we have been towing the motorcycles.
Okay.
So I don't think we, I don't believe we've towed too many of the Super Seventy-Three's, but we have towed some, if it was egregious enough.
Okay.
We are realizing that the education, even when we call the parent, well, I'll give you one scenario where we had, there was listed as an e-bike. Yeah, we had two crashes within three weeks involving the same motorcycle. And one was a friend borrowed it and crashed, and we went out and dealt with that, and we gave it to the the father, and we promised this is things going away, and then his son crashed it a couple of weeks later. So that was kind of my tipping point where I'm like, okay, I'm just kind of done. You guys should just tow these every time, because that may seem harsh, but everything else is not working. The education warnings never work.
So, so tow's, towed means it's it's impounded?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not like towed and you get it back.
Well, yeah, you can still get it back, but there's like a serious, there's actually some decent fines associated with that and fees. It's, it's a complicated issue. There's lots, I mean, you could ban all two-wheeled transportation devices in Larkspur. Well, guess what? That, that's a big gillnet out there gathering everything. And I, you know, my two cents is, as a council, what you tend to try to do when you're making law is don't go over broad. Don't throw the gillnet out there to solve the problem. You know, try and be more targeted and specific. As a police chief, yes, if you enacted this, would it make it easier a little bit? Would it help us? Do we need the help? That's not really where our issues are right now, is with the law, where the law is. So I don't know if that.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Chief, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to to follow up on the school program that you were saying. Could you give us a little bit more, I don't know if detail is the right word, but help us understand what the school registration program or to all, you know, of these motorcycles have to be parked in one place, and then they go and they check if they're the right ones or does that work?
They're not going to be allowed on campus if they're not by definition an e-bike. That's why the definition's so important.
Right, but but how do, do they, do they walk around campus and notify the police if they see bikes that couldn't be there?
I, I don't want to, you know, speak too out of turn because it's not, you know, my policy, but the draft versions are, they'll have very specific tags that can't be counterfeited, that they'll have to obtain, and they'll have to apply through an online registration process that also involves a visual inspect and inspection. If they have any questions, they'll reach out to us as someone else to. Inspection. If they have any questions, they'll reach out to us as someone else to like quasi, you know, um, subject matter expert to help them.
So the school will issue the tags?
Yes, this has nothing to do with us. We're just there to help them in any way they need, obviously, because they're helping us a lot by doing this.
And, and if, if somebody doesn't have a tag, what is the con, if it doesn't include you, what's the consequence, like a suspension or something like that?
There's escalating, you know, um, I don't want to say they're penalties, but there's escalating things that could lead up.
Through the school.
Yeah, it's all through the school. And, um, and they do have some pretty creative ways that I won't get into for when they, let's say, see a bicycle on campus that. Um, does not have the tag and it doesn't involve sitting around and waiting for the student either. So. Yeah, we're helping them with that. I think it'll be helpful. What'll probably happen, to be honest, is we'll see a spillover of the bikes parked just off campus. And, um, we're coming up with some creative ways to deal with that too. So we're trying to anticipate everything as best we can.
Hey, I'm sorry, and one, one more question. Is there anything that from your perspective that we as a council can do? To support you in this effort? Or support the schools in this?
I think at this point, um, I don't think so. I think I want to see how this goes in the fall. If it's not going well, I'll, I'll come back through them via the managers and, you know, probably through the police council and go, hey, this is. We made a little dent or we made no impact or whatever it is. Um, I think we need to go to plan B, but that's plan A right now and plan B could involve this. Honestly, I'd probably go a little farther. I'd want. As a police chief, if, if this doesn't work, like we're exhausted education and it's still a problem. It's like, we need to ratchet it up a little bit. And it'll probably go beyond operating these. It would be just being in possession of them. Kind of like, uh, we don't have to catch a minor drinking a beer if they're just walking down the street or standing next to one, it's enough. Um, some things like that. I think you could also look at, as you mentioned, the social host, some sort of, um, fines for parents. Cause it really is mostly minors that we're dealing with. Um, in terms of our calls for service regarding these.
Thank you. Did you have questions?
Thank you, chief. Uh, my questions are more about, again, some of this definition, because I think. There's a lot of confusion about what is legal for someone who's under the age of sixteen to ride. And what is not legal? Because I think some of these mopeds that you're talking about, it's confusing because they can pedal. Up to a certain speed and then they can go beyond that on, you know, using. Um, using a throttle. And so I think there's, there's a lot of gray areas. And then when you go and you try to purchase as a parent, one of these. Bicycles, e-bikes, um, a lot of times the salespeople don't know. Like, does this thing go, you know, is there, is this thing go up to more than seven hundred and fifty watts? Like, a lot of times. The salespeople themselves don't know and they're like, eh, we're not sure. And, um, so I, I think. I think we need to be very clear in terms of defining, you know, what is acceptable, I think. For children, because I think we're, we're talking about a pretty narrow subset of the population, right? People. Mostly ten to sixteen, but let's just call it under sixteen-year-olds. And then we're talking about gray area, these, these vehicles that can be classified as. Bicycle or moped. And it, you know, and, and, and I, I, it seems to me like that's kind of where the confusion is, because if it's totally electric. That's clearly illegal and children, you know, people under the age of sixteen without a license shouldn't be on those. Is that, is that the way the law is written?
I don't think it's, it, there's a gray area at all. I'll be honest. I think it's confusing law. Um, and that's why it took me a while and you really have to like delve into it a bit. And there are, you know, some colorful charts out there that, you know, we've included before. Um, and that's why I like my letter to the parents. It was like three pages long. You know, which is a lot to digest, I understand, but my hope was people who are thinking of buying these or do, who own one. Would actually take the time to read it. There's really not much gray area. It's either, it doesn't matter. If it's a motorcycle or a minibike or this, all that matters is, is it an e-bike or not? That's all you, that's all that matters. Cause if it's not an e-bike and it's motorized, it cannot be on the road or sidewalk unless it's registered with DMV. And the person has a license.
But, but isn't the class two e-bike currently legal for minors?
Yes.
It, it is, right. So that's what.
Class two.
Right. So that's what I'm saying is it's a little bit confusing because.
But what we're saying is these, these super seventy-three's, for example, or a lot of these bikes we're running into.
Right.
They're not e-bikes at all.
Well, but they're class three e-bikes, just.
They're not class three. They're not e-bikes at all. So they're, they are motorcycles or they are mopeds. An e-bike is, uh. There's a difference between like a moped and motorcycle, right? Um, and e-bike is kind of its own thing too. It's not a catchall. It's not an, uh, an e-bike is not like a, a general term. It's a very specific. So you have like a bicycle and a skateboard and a scooter. And then you have like an e-bike. It's, it's that type of thing, if that makes sense.
So what, what, what is your distinction then between a moped and say a class three e-bike?
Um, yeah, well, so a class three cannot have, uh, any sort of, uh, throttle control, whereas mopeds do. Mopeds, you don't pedal the whole time. They're kind of like a, a pedal motorcycle. Um, so a class two e-bike would be, um. For example, super seventy-three does make two very low-end ones. I think they're meant for little kids. And those, I believe, do max out at five hundred watts and they have, uh, throttle control. So those by definition, I believe, I might be speaking, would be e-bikes, because they can't go above twenty miles an hour with the throttle. And, uh, the motor can only output up to seven fifty. It's very confusing. And that's why in my letter. Um, I told people before you buy these, you need to like research this brand. And most of these brands, if you go to their website, actually have this information on there. It's, it's not like hiding. It's, it's hiding in plain sight. And most of the bike store owners that I've talked to when I've gone in, not in uniform, and I've gone to some in the county. You know, when I push them, they'll, oh yeah, this goes thirty-five miles an hour. This, and you have to ask the questions. And that's why circling back. It's kind of a shady business right now. The manufacturers and some of the people selling, not all. And that's why I'm really trying to get the district attorney involved in this, because it's either gonna have to be that. Or, um, you know, like a class action lawsuit, but some consumers that are wronged or something.
So kind of the minimum are, are the power, the moment it goes over one horsepower, it's, it's not an e-bike.
Yeah.
And the moment it goes over twenty-eight miles an hour, it's not an e-bike.
Correct.
And the moment it has a throttle, it's not an e-bike.
No, it can't.
Oh, uh, but if it stays under those other.
It's, it's really.
So it's the power and the speed.
Like the Marin Bicycle Coalition, they have like a site page on this that I've also included in the letters and they have. Some pretty good diagrams and things like that where it kind of lays it out. Um, you know, we thought about doing flow charts, but the flow charts are crazy. You know, you see the things, if it's this, then it's that. If it's not. And that's why I'm still to this day. Training and retraining my officers because it's crazy like how complicated it is. And just for me to finally get it, it took a while. And I had to talk to a lot of people and do a lot of research because it's not clear. And that's. That's what's frustrating is the state realized it early on. And they said, you know what? I know what we'll do. You gotta put a sticker on it. And then the problem is the manufacturers are putting stickers on it that are being misrepresented. And you can also go, I mean, we can generally tell, but you can go on eBay and buy a pack of stickers too.
Right.
Um, so there definitely needs to be some more regulation regarding the sale and manufacture at the state level. I feel like that applies. All throughout, but I'm not sure it's, you know, quote unquote, a, a real sexy thing statewide at this point. And that's why even that proposed legislation coming from the state is a Marin pilot program. It's only gonna apply to Marin if you opt into it. And that's because it did not get enough traction statewide, essentially.
You were, our central Marin, uh, police authority is a three jurisdiction, as we know. Are you getting, um. This conversation and support from councils in the other two jurisdictions?
Yeah, this is pretty much how we're, we're asking to approach it. It's, we have these tools. If, if you, if the council was like, well, thank you, chief, but we want to get rid of class two e-bikes front. We personally feel. They're either unsafe or they're a nuisance. That would be fine. And that would be a tool we could use. But if you set the fine to twenty-five dollars, I'd probably tell my officers, just do the vehicle code. It has more of a penalty and we need to send more of a message, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So, sorry, this is a little bit left field, but you know, I, I've been tracking the state legislation and like Connolly's e-bike age limit. Doesn't really help because it's an age limit on e-bikes and these aren't e-bikes.
Well, the problems we're dealing with.
Yeah, I mean, everything you just described, the Marin grand jury report.
So, when you, when I have walked around the campuses, most of what I'm seeing are not e-bikes, but there are some e-bikes there. I have seen all. I've seen quite a few very nice class one that the kids probably, you know, take up Mount Tam or something. Um, which is still, I guess, not technically legal, but it's about to be. Um, and then, um, I have seen a few legal class twos. So his would be that broader approach where it would hypothetically, um, penalize parents who did the research. And bought a state legal class two e-bike. Now those, they wouldn't be allowed to ride that. And that's kind of one of the reasons I'm not pushing for this, even though it could help a little bit. I feel we have enough tools. But that would really upset me as a parent if I had done this research and gone to like a reputable place and bought something that is legal for my kid. And then it was told I, they can't have it.
Thanks. Okay, I got, sorry, two more quick questions. Uh, the first is, uh, regarding. The class two e-bikes. Hypothetically, everyone turns in their motorcycle mopeds and gets class two e-bikes. Right? So we got tons of class two e-bikes riding around. Do you feel the regulations that we have regarding class two e-bikes are appropriate? Or do you just feel it's not the priority right now because we got all these other problems with non-class two e-bikes?
I would say if you felt you wanted to get rid of class two e-bikes for minors, you should probably get rid of. All e-bikes for minors. And people will disagree with that and go, oh, the throttle, that's really dangerous. I've, I've ridden lots of e-bikes with throttles and not. Um, there's a little bit of a learning curve to it, but. I think if you got rid of class two and we got rid of all the mopeds and then we got rid of all the class two. We might have problems with class ones. I will say that. We aren't seeing the safety issues with the class ones and twos. And maybe that's because no kids are riding them around. And they're riding these illegal ones. I can't say, you know, um, I will say, once they started, we have a lot less, um. Teenage driving issues. We have, now we have e-bikes. It's just shifted, right? Um. I do think it's helped with traffic, you know, I'll be honest with you. There's definitely, you know, I'm, I'm, I work every day between. Our middle school and, and high school, so I see everything. There's definitely a lot more of the, the kids on the bikes. Every year it gets more and more. But, um, there's less kids at least being driven to middle school, I would say for sure. It's noticeable. So. That's where I just, we gotta be a little careful, I think. Like, let's say you were like, I'm done with bicycles. Get rid of all the bicycles. I'd be like, no. Like, that means everyone's gonna get driven to school. It's just, you know, we just have to, something to consider.
Alright, and, uh, the second question I have is actually for Sky. I, I think we may have mentioned this before. But as a city, uh, as we have illegal bikes being ridden and, and people having accidents in our city. Would we have standing to perhaps to a class action lawsuit, um, against. Uh, an illegal seller, manufacturer of e-bikes, even if that. S- you know, manufacturer seller was not located in our jurisdiction?
So if, if Larkspur wanted to initiate litigation in the form of class action, first, there'd have to be a class of plaintiffs, so. Other jurisdictions that are similarly situated. And second, you'd have to be able to articulate, um, some damages to the city. Um, that are cognizable in the courts as ones that provide a remedy. Injuries to individuals is not necessarily something that, 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 that the cities can assert as, as something that, um. Is liability to them. Um, there may be some individual cases where that's, that is the case, but. I, I think it might be, I certainly think that, you know, it's something that could be investigated, but I would have a hard time seeing what the, what the monetary damages are. To Larkspur and other cities from, from this. You know, uh, the, there may be some marginal increase in law enforcement costs, but I'm not sure that's really something that's cognizable as a, as a damages. Now, if there were, there are other class actions related to environmental contamination or the opioid cases. But in those cases, the, the underlying harm to the public agencies is there are cleanup costs, there are, um, health services costs. It's, it's, it's beyond just law, additional law enforcement costs. Um, so it's theoretically possible, but, uh. I, I, I'm, I'm, I struggle to see the contours of the case.
Maybe all the cases that end up in Marin general that we end up paying for, or we don't actually pay.
Right, but that's just it. It's not the city. Um.
Is there anything other than class action? That you think would be a. A, a way to institute litigation that, that might make more sense?
Um, it's an area of law that I don't have a great deal of familiarity with and, um. Uh, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, it was sort of, uh, some court decisions kind of hollowed out. Um, the strength of it, but there are, um, some provisions in the business and professions code that. Um, deal with unfair business practices. Um, it used to be, um, somewhat easier to obtain. Uh, um, injunctive relief against businesses that were misrepresenting the products that they have on the market. Um, it's more challenging to do that now, um, but it is something that, that we, we could look into. But, um, there, there, there were some instances within the last five years or so of district attorneys actually. Um, looking at bringing civil litigation against, um, private actors of, under this provision of the business of inspections code. So it is something that potentially, uh, the Marin District Attorney's Office could look at if they haven't already.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And chief, thank you for, uh, being patient, answering a lot of questions. Does anybody else have questions? Okay, I'll turn it back over to staff. Uh, I know we didn't get through the entire presentation. Uh, I don't know if you wanted, I probably answered most of the questions. You know, uh. Tangentially, but if you wanted to continue.
I'll keep it moving and you can slow me down if you have more questions. Take that approach, so on to, um. Yeah, I'm trying to move on. Okay. Um. So response, uh, two, by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the county of Marin and each municipality of Marin should take all steps necessary. To establish a joint task force or committee to investigate and consider. Coordination among the county municipalities about adopting a countywide uniform, set of regulations regarding e-bikes within the county of Marin. The city's response up there was in our original response. We've added a cover letter to the grand jury as well as slightly amended this recommendation to where. We're still not taking the full recommendation of the grand jury, but since this report was published and since Larkspur staff drafted our report, we were one of the first to put it on the consent calendar. Um, the Marin County Police Chiefs Association has established an informal committee that's seeking to share best practices. And assist communities in developing effective approaches around this issue. Again. I won't speak for, for the chief, but law enforcement has been talking to each other and talks to each other regularly on these shared issues. But there is now an ad, an ad hoc committee around this. Um, but again, my, uh, the chief has already spoken to this number of times, but really. The most powerful tool now is the vehicle code and existing municipal ordinances that are gonna allow us to address this. So we, we put that in the report as, as the approach we're taking. Uh, recommendation number three has that the task force is describing recommendation two, should consider inviting representation from. Marin County Schools, Law Enforcement, Public Health Officials and Bicycle Advocates to provide their input. Again, I'll let the, the chief speak more to this if he would like, but folks have already spoken to each other. I want to bring that. There's a number of public comment from bicycle advocates, members of the community who have all been paying attention to this issue. And although, uh, safety around, um, around class two e-bikes, around things that are misrepresented as class two e-bikes. Are the crux of this report. In general, bicycles are great. Like, the chief has brought this up and we want to encourage this use. This mode of transportation and especially among our, our young folks to get cars off the road, to have sustainability goals, to have. Um, a number, a number of things here. So it won't be, we wouldn't say that it would be implemented because it's not warranted. The. The conversations that are happening around the community and have happened for the past year plus will continue, um, are sufficient. Recommendation four, um, the grand jury recommended that the boy to, board of supervisors should explore options for additional funding. For student and public education about Marin County and e-bike safety. Staff always responds this way when the grand jury asks us to, uh, comment on a recommendation that doesn't involve the city of Larkspur directly. Um, we said it's not applicable to our jurisdiction and we'll allow the board of supervisors to comment on that because it really, it really relates to, to them and their decisions. And that is the end of the, um, staff report. So I'll take any questions from council or the public.
Um, Shannon, I know, or I'm sorry, Assistant City Manager, um, I know that a number of jurisdictions have this on their agenda and they're discussing it. This week or, um, and I think the Marin County Board of Supervisors discussed it yesterday at their meeting. Um, do you know what? The results were and, and, and their response to the grand jury?
Staff report, they took a slightly different approach where they actually said that instead of, um, under the recommendations, not under the findings. That a number of them warranted more investigation and that staff would follow up, rather than. Larkspur felt confident that for now and again, the, the chief spoke to things may change in a year, right? About how we approach this, but for now, the recommendations aren't gonna be, be implemented. And, um, particularly in response to this report, staff won't do more work on this. We'll continue to work on the e-bike issue and bring, um, items to the council and the community if it's warranted. And um particularly in response to this report, staff won't do more work on this. We'll continue to work on the e-bike issue and bring um items to the council and the community if it's warranted.
Okay, most specifically, I think that um the county board supervisors um wanted to convene a task force. And I don't know if that's gonna include all eleven jurisdictions or ten jurisdictions in Marin, I don't know, but um they did vote to, I think. Convene a task force and so is that something that we will want to participate in? And I guess we have to. I I, you know, I guess this is a good, this is a question for council. Um, it sounds like they, the county has signaled and I think Ross did as well. They signaled that. Um, this grand jury report, some of the recommendations um warranted additional investigation, as you said. And I think the county went a little further and said they did want to convene a task force and so.
They had a different approach and pardon, um, but Ross also took a little bit of a different approach and said that the the convening of the chiefs. Organization counted as the recommendation being implemented from one of the recommendations for the for the joint task force and for it. Being worked on, whereas Larkspur, in our response, said that there's a, there's a task force there and we're acknowledging that, but it's not quite what the grand jury had recommended.
Okay. But but I think maybe clarifying for Stephanie, when a county board of supervisors puts together a task force, they assemble the. The the they assemble the participants in it um to serve mostly the county jurisdiction as opposed to the cities. Am I correct with that?
Depending, and they a lot of times will be invited to county task force or regional task force often. Uh, Larkspur and our our neighbors participate in joint efforts where it makes sense to to work as a community.
Okay, uh with that, um unless uh any objections, I will open it up to the public. And with that, I am opening it to the public, so. Public that has questions or comments regarding this item, now it'd be your chance, come on up and let's uh. Let's hear your thoughts.
Good evening, Bob Middlestead for E-Bike Access. This is really the night I've been waiting for for nine months. When we came up, fu- first figured out that these were illegal, there were people who said, no, they've got a class two label on them. So they gotta be legal. We worked and we worked and we worked. We proposed the school registration program as a way to enforce it. And I'm just, I couldn't be more delighted with where we are now. And Chief Norton deserves a lot of credit for being a leader here. So if I say anything else, it would, I might be taken to be ungrateful and I'm not. I'm just happy with where we are here. But your response just seems a little negative to me. Uh, it kind of locks you in a little bit. It's not warranted. You know, uh, you're saying all this stuff is not warranted. It may turn out to be, so I I think further analysis is the way to. Requires further analysis is the option, should go it, but I I don't want to quibble with that because what I want to focus on. Is a couple of other things. One is for the registration program of the schools and for getting the word out to parents. That they can't buy these things anymore and they can't let their kids uh uh ride them. The most important thing is to make it easy for the parents. And you'll, there's, there's a reluctance to say super seventy-three is illegal. But that's what we're saying, you know, Councilmember Paulson said it. Um, but I want the city and the city's attorney to take the wraps off. Chief Norton and let him say publicly, super seventy-three is a brand, one of several brands that is illegal. If we don't do that, we're just playing games.
Uh, let me, let me, let me stop you for a second and and ask, Chief, um. My memory from what you said is super seventy-three is a brand that has high end, low end. And some super seventy-threes are legal. Is it, am I, did I hear that correctly?
They have a very low end one, but that's not what we're encountering generally out there.
Okay, so.
Low end ones appear to possibly be illegal, but the high end ones do not appear to be.
Okay.
They they have.
No, no, I I just, just, just from a a legal perspective, I I I. I'm concerned if we say super seventy-three is illegal and they have a legal one, then then we're gonna have a little problem, that's all.
They have a fifteen mile an hour one that they sell for four to eight year olds, throttled. Four to eight year olds goes fifteen miles an hour. I don't know that that's illegal. I'm still looking at that, but I'm fine with saying. Uh, most brand, most models of super seventy-three are illegal. Um, but need to name brands because when you're, when you have the registration program. The schools are gonna say this bike is gonna be registered, this bike can't. And so. You know, somebody's gotta know what the brands are.
So so let me, let let me stop you there for a second and and let me ask the chief. Um, is it realistic um based on your experience to come up with? And not you personally, but for us to come up with a list as a guide to parents. Saying these brands and models are not legal to be driven by anyone under sixteen unless it's registered with the DMV. And list super seventy-six, model X twenty-three, X twenty-four, X twenty-five and and is that. A a reasonable approach and would you recommend that?
I don't know if I'd recommend it just due to the, Sky's probably wheels are spinning over there. Um, I see a lot of. Liability exposure with doing that, but I can tell you for the the registration, we are actively involved in that. And we will be assisting the schools with determining on a case by case basis which ones are legal and and which are not and which. Therefore, which ones can be registered and which cannot. It's, it's unfortunate that, you know, maybe we could have stopped someone from buying one in advance of showing up, you know, that. You know, trying to register the months before school, but that's why a lot of those letters I sent out were sent. Was hoping to get people to stop, pump the brakes and think about what they're about to purchase.
I I think uh uh this is a combination legal and practical issue is that any list that we prepared would be a snapshot in time. Um, I I don't know how long it takes for any of these companies to relabel, modify. Um, yeah, alter the way that they're they're um putting the a product out on the market and so. You'd basically be setting up a situation in which your staff is going to have to, in order to not be misrepresenting the legality of a product. Be constantly monitoring what's happening with the market and updating the list. And then uh at the other end of it, the recipients of the list are gonna have to be constantly watching for the an updated version of it to know what to allow. I think that's all something that could be done, but I think you you know, there's, it's a, it's a question of staff allocation of resources that that you, council would have to consider. Whether or not the value is there for that level of work.
Yeah, I I I tend to agree with that in in the sense that if we put out a list. And a bike is not on that list and a parent relies on that list and buys a bike and it turns out that. They had come up with a new model that we hadn't updated the list fast enough, then the parent is gonna come to us and say you're liable and. I I think that could be problematic.
You know, in my first year of law school, um, people would say, here's all the reasons we can't do something. Here's all the problems. I always wanted to look at it from the other way. Why do it? Do you have a public duty? To inform the public when you know there's a danger? If there was a contaminated baby food. Would you say, oh, well, we can't tell the public we're afraid of liability that somebody's gonna sue us? No, you you give them the information and to deal with both of these issues, you can say, as of today's date. The following uh brands are illegal and you can say, and there are others. But the chief's letter, he was required to say, one popular brand. Is illegal. And it's like, um, if I'm a parent and I read that, I I'll be honest with you. I talked to. The superintendent of one of the local schools and I said, why don't, why are you allowing fifteen super seventy-three's on your parking lot in your middle school? They're super seventy-three's. Why do you allow them? And he said. If the chief of police is not saying super seventy-three's are illegal, if he's not permitted to say. This brand is illegal, I'm not gonna do it. So we need to break that logjam. So I I I'm not gonna.
Bob, can I, can I jump in?
Bob, I I really appreciate your passion for this and you've actually been very. Um, provided a lot of information in your public comment that's been written and several times and you also attended the Marin Marathon Council members. And gave a comment there, so I'm really learning a lot from what you have. Um, it's a conundrum, I think, that we're all in and I I think some of your suggestions um might be uh. Delivered to this task force that the Chiefs Association has put together to give more information and more options. And I think as a council, we need to continue to have this conversation, but I want to rely on our professionals at who we. Um, we know, who know more about the California Vehicle Code and the California law than we do. To give us some recommendations after their task force, so um I would, I would encourage you to and to continue to provide that information for them. And possible solutions, but um. We may be limited in what we can do um by way of the California State Vehicle Code too.
Okay, but there's not, yes, thank you very much. There's nothing in the vehicle code that says when you, you've gotta say one popular brand. And withhold from the public that you know what the brand is.
And I, yeah, and and to your point, and the branding, that's probably what the conversation could continue to evolve with the school districts. Because I'm sure this technology and the type of popular item and the type of popular vehicle is gonna change probably by Christmas. So, I mean, it's an ongoing, uh it's an ongoing um issue that really needs a collaboration between the parents, the schools, the police and us.
All I'm saying is right now, the pop, the most popular one at all middle school, everywhere else in Marin. Is super seventy-three and for the life of me, I don't understand why we don't tell parents what we know, what we're talking about in this room. Why we gotta keep it a secret from them? I I just, I don't get that, but um. Let me, if I can, just try and clear up one other area of confusion with these various classes. Forget about class one and class three, those are just pedal assist. What we're talking about, if it has a throttle, so you can power it without doing anything except putting your thumb on a throttle. It's either an e-bike. Or it's a motorcycle or a moped, or I think the proper definition is motor vehicle, because the other ones don't fit. But uh to be considered an e-bike, as the chief says, it can't have more than seven fifty watts. And it can't be capable of going over twenty. So to your point, it doesn't matter how fast you see it going. When it's sitting there and somebody's getting on it, it's capable of going more than twenty. It, the law's written that way to make it easy to enforce. You don't have to wait till a kid goes over twenty. He's on the bike riding. And it's illegal. Um, and here's, here's a. Go on.
No, no, you're sorry, this is.
Here's the last, last point I wanna make. The, the beauty of what seventeen seventy-eight will enable you to do. And it's unfortunate that the grand jury kind of came in in between, because now you just sort of have this abstract thing. You don't have the authority to pass the minimum age sixteen for class two e-bikes. So we're talking about this in the abstract. Um, but the beauty of that, if and when you get the authority, is it will reach everything labeled class two. So it will reach super seventy-three, just think about this for a minute. Seventy, super seventy-three puts the class two label on it. And can they sell it to a a uh for use by a minor under sixteen? No, because they say it's a class two. What they'd have to do is say, oh, wait a second. For the purpose of this minimum age ordinance, we're not a class two, we're a motorcycle. They're not gonna do that, because if they're a motorcycle, you know, then you gotta have a driver's license, DMV registration, a whole bottle of wax. So this, I don't know if it's inadvertent or inadvertent, but the ordinance, everything labeled class two. You gotta be sixteen to ride. You know, I I'm, I'm okay with the idea that let's see what happens with the school registration. Let's see um if somehow we can find enforcement refor- resources to do more. Uh, because what I'm afraid of is every time there's a kid on a super seventy-three or the other illegal models. And they see a police and the police don't stop them and don't impound the the bike. That just encourages them. It's taken as condoning. So I think we need to get the message out, we need to name names and we need to, you know, have a show of force. And whether that, whether that is uh you have a crackdown for a week. It coincides with the opening of school. And I guess the very last point is, um, I I do think time is of the essence. I may sound impatient, but I've been at this. You know, since since the the winter and what I would like is to have something like this. I'll, I'll leave it with the clerk. Tips for parents for buying e-bikes and or for buying bicycles and it starts off saying. You ought to buy a regular bike and here's all the benefits of a regular bike. If your kid isn't able to ride a regular bike, because you live up a big hill. Get a class one, so they can pedal. I ride a class one. I'm an old guy. I'm weak. I can go up any mountain and in Marin and elsewhere. Uh, if I can do it, you know, a kid can do it. And then finally, I get to the throttle mopeds and I say, they're not recommended. And they're not recommended because if they can go faster than twenty, they're illegal. Uh, they're dangerous. The accident rate for kids ten to fifteen is five to seven times higher than any other age group. And you know what the kids ten to fifteen are riding? The chief is right in my experience. Ninety percent of them are riding these illegal bikes, so they shouldn't be buying any of that. And the final point is, they need to take into account that it's a bad investment. Because it might not be long before they can't ride them to school and they can't ride them if they're under sixteen, so kind of give them some advanced warning to. Take your point into account that uh what about the parent who buys one now? Not knowing. So um, thank you very much for giving.
No, thank you. Hey, uh, let me.
Can I, yeah, just add one thing?
Yes.
Electric scooters. Uh, there are a lot of electric scooters at your, at your schools, including the middle schools. Under existing law, they are illegal without a driver's license or an instructional permit. It's also illegal to have uh passengers. On an electric scooter, so I'm hoping that the school registration program will include. You know, some warning and and some enforcement on that. Um, you know, kids. Hardly anybody knows that. I think the chief and I may be the only people in Marin who know that. But, you know, they're, they're not legal for very, very good reason. I mean, you you think bicycles are dangerous for. For kids, those electric scooters, I wouldn't even get on one, but, okay, thank you.
And I just had one question for our city attorney. Um, if hypothetically, there was a private citizen who wanted to publish hypothetically in the IJ. A list of brands and models that would be legal to ride under sixteen. Would there be any reason a private citizen couldn't do that?
Just risk of defamation.
Right, but but I mean, if 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 the same, the same thing that we're talking about, I mean, private citizens said, as of August first. You know, the following, you know, models or or brands or or however that was. Um, don't qualify as e-bikes and be illegal to ride if you're under, you know, eight, under sixteen without a license. Is that, uh, do you see a a a problem with that?
For the city?
No, no.
I I don't. Here's the better question. Is there any legal liability if the city?
Well, I think the 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 answer was there might be.
Um, so from your city attorney, you're entitled to a definitive answer. Everything's possible.
Well.
The question is, well.
Yes, I I appreciate that. I think, as you know, in the law, there are not definitive answers. There are shades of gray of. You know, what, how likely is it or things like that, but I I don't think you can say. There is a zero percent risk that the city would have a problem if they published a list and it turned out that. A week later, something wasn't on the list, somebody relied on the list, there was a problem. That that could come back to hurt the state.
You publish the list. And it's worded as of today and here are examples and they're not exhaustive. Uh, and you get sued for defamation by super seventy-three, I'll indemnify you. It's never gonna happen. You're never gonna come up here to Marin Court and sue Chief Norton for saying what all of us know. But we're unwilling to say publicly, uh, you know, come on, guys, it's. If if I go out to, if if somebody goes out tomorrow, buys a super seventy-three and their kid is one of the. Uh, accident that's in chief is talking about and they come to you and they say, did you know these were illegal? And you say, well, we did, but. That's what we meant when we said one popular brand and we were a little afraid that maybe somebody, you know. You have a public duty to inform the public.
Alright, but we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry if I came off too strong, but.
No.
I've just been at this for so long and I've just. Um, we we're just waiting for this day that this registration program actually goes into effect. And we get all the super seventy-three's off the streets and out of the schools. It it's something that can be fixed. It's something that can be done. And one last thing, we have metrics that are gonna show how good a job. It, it's something that can be fixed. It's something that can be done. And one last thing, we have metrics that are going to show how good a job we do. And the metrics are going to be, how many of these are in our schools? And I'll go back for safe routes to school and do another census. And we're going to see how many accidents we've had. How many accidents we've had while we're waiting to figure out what to do and whether we can tell the public the names of these brands that we have concluded are illegal. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, and we are still on public comment, so come on up.
Uh, James Holmes, for a couple of points. Uh, I have to agree with the prior speaker that the, um, uh, response just comes across as being a, a little bit negative or, or unduly dismissive. And even if it could be softened slightly to say something like recommendation will not be implemented at this time for the following reasons. And then incorporate those reasons or state for the reasons specified elsewhere. Um, I have forgotten whether the, um, whether the, the city's elaboration is contained actually in the response or in the cover letter, but I think if it were softened in this matter, it wouldn't be seemed, it wouldn't seem so dismissive. Secondly, stress what you are doing. As I sat here and listened to what the chief was saying, it sounded like the city was doing as much as they could. I didn't get that from reading the response. Maybe I missed something. Maybe I, I go back and, and respond. But, but if there's some way that you can make it clear what you are doing, the kind of thing you heard here, uh, I think it would be a lot more positive and it wouldn't seem so dismissive. And so, and we, we should state, we should tell our story because we do have a story to tell. And, and the final point is, ha- having sat here and listened to this, it's still unclear to me, uh, why we wouldn't want to have operators of class two e-bikes wear helmets and passengers thereof wear helmets. That's seems to me to be a fairly straightforward thing. Uh, and particularly given that the council concurs with all the findings regarding safety. Uh, why not require them to wear helmets? And if they're not wearing helmets, isn't that a good enforcement device? Because if you see someone whizzing along without a helmet, then you can stop them and, and maybe you can investigate what kind of a bite they have too. So if, if we aren't requiring the, the helmets, that would seem to be a fairly straightforward thing that could be required irrespective of all the, um, the issues regarding class two versus other types of vehicles.
Thank you, James. All right. Other public comments. Seeing none, I will close public comment. I have a question for the chief. Which is, um, you know, but just going off of what, what Mr. Holmes just said. Um, I understand that, that certain bikes, the e-bikes don't really seem to be the problem. It's non-e-bikes at this point. That's the major problem. However, if we did pass something saying people on class two e-bikes had to wear a helmet, people, if they're not class two e-bikes, they have to wear a helmet anyway. So.
I believe class three requires a helmet. I could be mistaken. And everyone under sixteen years old has to wear a helmet.
And if they're motorcycles, they're not e-bikes, they would still have to wear a helmet.
They'd have to wear motorcycle helmet.
Right. So, so is there a downside to saying class two e-bike riders?
I believe you actually received a, a public comment that lays it out pretty good by someone in the Marin Bicycle Coalition. It's attached to the packet that I think argues why. And I don't want to screw it up. But it's, um, I think there was just something regarding, it would be, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, are they recommending everyone wearing a class, and not driving a class two e-bike has to wear a helmet?
Because we're speaking on behalf of someone else's public comment. I'd want to look at it very.
No, no, I mean, in the findings of the grand jury, they're recommending, I don't have that in front of me. They're saying everyone, every rider of a class two.
Operators of class two e-bikes must wear helmets.
So I ride bikes and I always wear a helmet because I've seen what happens when you don't. But as of now, state law does not require people over sixteen to wear helmets except for motorcycles or class threes. So it'd be kind of, it could be, I'm not sure how the, the bicycle coalition and people who choose to ride bicycles without helmets, they might be.
Got it. So, so just so I understand, right now.
For minors, we're already covered under sixteen. So you would be affecting seventy-two year olds.
Right. And so anybody over sixteen now doesn't have to wear a helmet. This would change it. Got it. Okay. That, that clarifies. Thank you.
So, um, it looks like our business item is to review the responses and to give our affirmation to them or make changes. Um, I appreciate how your full explanation for this. And I also, thank you, Bob. But, and I also appreciate that we really are, um, working hard to try to solve this problem through a collaboration with the schools and the parents. And testing a lot of things to try to get, um, really, uh, community, understanding and community buy-in. I look forward to hearing what the police chiefs association's, um, subcommittee is going to find. Taking a lot of the information that is available by the Marin Bicycle Coalition and by the Safe Routes to School. And then we'll learn more. I'm comfortable with our responses that have been drafted. I know very often cities get, um, uh, grand jury reports and we try to review them and we try to get as much clarity from them. And when we often will make a response that, um, is a basic response because, um, we need a little bit more information. So I think what we're looking for in the future is more information. And I'm comfortable with our responses, the way they've been written by our staff.
All right. And let me, let me just throw out there to counsel. I, I think that, um, we're actually doing a great job, uh, and we, meaning you, are doing a great job in actually trying to solve the problem, taking affirmative steps, you know, to, to deal with this the right way. I do agree, that doesn't come off in our responses. It basically says, yeah, we're not going to do that. I don't know if it really matters and I would, I would defer to staff of, of why we chose that language.
I want to provide some context for a couple of gentlemen who spoke at public comments, said that maybe softening our approach might be something and saying that there's further analysis versus the stark language of this is not warranted. That's actually what, there are a certain number of ways, uh, jurisdiction that's called up by the grand jury to respond to the reports can provide an answer to a recommendation. So one is it's already been implemented. We're already doing it. Requires further analysis. We haven't implemented it, but it will be implemented into the future. The not warranted language, that's very stark, is actually language we're required to use. If we say that we're not going to invest more time in it or implement it. So those, those are actually a requirement of staff to do it. Yep. Exactly. When you look at the.
Well, thank you for explaining that. And with that knowledge, uh, I then concur that the, I agree with the, the report. And I'm.
Yeah, I did have one, um, just, it's a very minor, um, point, but, but, um, Chief Norton on the, I, I'm wondering two things. As far as, you know, you wrote a very thoughtful letter and, you know, one of the public comments was to call out, you know, super seventy-three. I'm wondering if there would be value in what is really a black and white issue like, hey, parent, if you're going to buy something over seven fifty watts that goes over twenty-eight miles an hour, it's, it's illegal and it could be impounded. For example, you know, you might be saying super, but I mean, that alone, I don't think there's any risk there. And that may have already been in the letter. I have to reread it. But I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, just, I, I just want to feel that everyone's gotten, you know, as much information as possible for the upcoming fall crackdown.
Did go through some legal edits and I'll leave it at that. Um, but I will say, I think you can, you can say it didn't go far enough and you can agree or not agree, but, um, at the same time, I think it's, the education is all there. It does take some effort, you know, these, the, the example I gave you of the, the motorcycle with the two kids crashing the same motorcycle. They were students at our local high school. So the parents received it. Um, I think we're, we're focusing so hard on educating the parents. I think that it's there. I think some people just choose to ignore it and they're going to probably be the ones who ends up, you know, getting their, their motorcycles or mopeds towed. Um, and that's the reality of it. I will say too, that I'm very confident with this registration that there's, whether we call it out or not, it's not going to matter because we're also going to be involved in this registration. It's not like, uh, a superintendent is going to say, yeah, I'm not going to enforce that because it might, I'll be going there and looking at the lots myself or my school resource officer. Better use of my time probably, we'll be going over there. And we have done that. We did that in the summer and that's what triggered these letters. Is, you know, you're kind of hearing hypotheticals and then you go see it and you go, oh, this is a big problem. We got to get on this. And I, I toured those grounds with the principal next to me. So it's, let's kind of wait and see. Because I think, I think we're getting a little, ourselves going, we need to do this and we need to tell them this and we need to do that. There's lots of groups other than the city or central Marin police that can compile a list and provide it as a, a legal buyer's guide. There's lots of nonprofits out there. There's lots of bicycle groups. There's lots of consumer groups. I don't think it would be wise for a city or police department to do that.
Okay. Appreciate it. All right. I concur with the other two council members.
Okay. Well, um, I will say that I feel, I, I don't like the not warranted language because I feel like it feels very, um, incongruous with agreeing with the findings, but we, we're not going to do, it sounds like we, we don't want to do anything about it. When in reality, we are doing a lot. And I think we're sort of adopting more of a wait and see type of, um, stance to see if some of these measures, the registration program and other things might be working. And so I would prefer to say that, you know, we are going to not implement, but pending further analysis. Like that would be my preferred, um, response. I just feel like that's a little more, um, true to what we're doing. I don't want to signal to the public that we're not doing any, we, we are doing something and this issue has followed. I mean, it's like, it keeps coming up, you know, it's sort of like, I don't want to keep talking about, but it keeps coming up. I think people want to see that city, you know, that city councils are doing something, that we are going to be doing something about this issue. And so, um, you know, Chief Norton, I, I, I am glad that you're, um, I, I read the, the memo. I got the memo. I have, I have one kid, uh, currently still at Redwood High School. I got your memo about, you know, what's, what's legal and what, you know, what, what is allowed on campus and not, um, for, for minors under the age of sixteen. I think we need to lead with the messaging and lead with the education. I think that's vitally important. I would say, you know, to the extent that there's multiple communications, again, it, unfortunately, not everybody reads everything and it was very long and was hard to digest. And even though I've been looking at this issue, um, I'm still confused, to be honest. Okay. And, and in my view, I'm kind of old school. I'm like, if you're not pedaling, it's not a bicycle. And I want my kids on something. And I like the pedal assist. I mean, you know, I, I've ridden those and I, and I really like those. And I, I think those are safe for our children to ride. Um, but I just feel like there's, these classifications are, they're confusing. And as a parent, when you're trying to buy something, purchase something for your child, again, um, I heard of a parent, actually this weekend, they went to five different stores and asked all of these questions of the salespeople on which brand and which type and which model of bicycle they could purchase for their child. And they couldn't get a straight answer. And until they finally went to this fifth store and they talked to the, actually the store owner came out from the back. And anyways, long story short is, I think even well-meaning parents who want to follow the law have, it's, it's, is difficult.
It's complicated.
It is.
The schools are going to do more education as part of the registration. I, I asked them. And I asked them to actually do their own messaging. I said, I'm, I'm too deep in this topic. I need you to do one that's as simple as possible. And that's, I think the Marin Bicycle Coalition is one of the better ones because it's, it's very short and succinct. Um, and then I will say to the, one of the first things I did was go to our local shops because we have a couple and just made sure they're not selling any of these and none of them were at the time. And I kind of quizzed them and they're like, no, we only sell class one. I'm like, well, you could sell class two or three. And they're like, nah, just class one. So I don't, I'll be careful here, but we do seem to have some very responsible and reputable bike shops in our central Marin jurisdiction that seem to be going above and beyond of what they're actually selling. So I think that's promising.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Um, and, and I don't know who this is to you, Sky, maybe to you. I don't know. Um, could we, I mean, I, I am in favor of educating people to, uh, make it simpler for them. You know, a yes, no list, this bike, yes, this bike, no. Um, I agree. Man, it's probably not the city's job to do that. So the question is, if we were to work with a nonprofit or whatever organization we're talking about, could we put a link on our website, say, questions about what's, what bikes are legal? Well, here's a link to blah, blah, blah. Or does that then all of a sudden make us responsible for where that link takes them and, and what's on that website we're referring them to?
I think we could probably put a disclaimer on, on any link to say, you know, this is, this is not our information, but we found it useful and, and we're not um, asserting the fact that, to, that, that every statement is factually correct, but we think it might be helpful for people. Yeah, something along those lines.
Can I ask counsel if we would be comfortable, um, asking staff to look into something like that as a way to educate parents looking for information without really diving in the pool and, and, and taking on a role that probably isn't our job to take?
So I, I'm, I think we need to kind of do a little step back, um, because I think what Chief Norton has told us is that our uh, police chiefs association is going to really look at this and come up with some suggestions, recommendations and uniformity across the board. And I would like to wait to hear that because I think the consistency is going to be a key, uh, not with, not only within our jurisdiction, but if I refer back to the social host ordinance where the real ab- ability to change behaviors and educate the parents and, and to really curb that behavior um, was because it was applied countywide and all the jurisdictions got together and all the jurisdictions came up with a plan and had collaboration and coordinating ordinances and, um, enforcement. And while that might be good information, I just don't want us to get ahead of all of our other jurisdictions that we, we'll need to collaborate with. Does that sound like something? I mean, what do you think of that, chief? Do, what would, would you want us to do that or?
If staff were to vet some sites, I, you know, I, I'm a big supporter of Marin Bicycle Coalition. I think they never steer anybody wrong. They're not going to have a list on there probably. Um, but they will have the information regarding maybe a little simpler version, a parent's guide. They do have a page on there called like, I think a parent's guide or a buyer's guide to responsible e-bikes. Um, now that you say it, I think I'll link our website to it and maybe I'll put my two letters on our website. As, you know, just like e-bike resource for parents or something.
That's great.
But I, that's what I think I'll do for our website.
So I would be comfortable with that because the Marin Bicycle Coalition is a well-respected embedded, um, organization that's been doing, um, investigation and, and lobbying for, um, all types of bicycle and pedestrian accessibility. So I would be comfortable with that. Not us generating our own, but just like the chief said, linking to some resources that are already available. But I, I don't want us to generate our own fact sheet about something.
No, I, I, I'm not disagreeing. And then, um, the public could lobby the Marin Bike Coalition. If they were interested in putting that on their website, we would refer to that. I, i- is that, uh, comfortable with, with everybody on council to, to recommend that to staff?
Yeah, I, I think, I think, um, how some of our ways point is good. You know, we don't want to have a bunch of uncoordinated efforts. But I think it's the same message and it's just more channels. And I don't think it conflicts with what Chief Norton wants to do. So.
I, I think we'll, uh, we'll, we'll open.
Well, I'm not public. I, I was going to try to get through this meeting without speaking, but I'm going to make a request to the council. I think you missed something the chief said, and I get why you did, but there's actually an office in government. And this is a general problem with the way the grand jury operates, right? They wrote this report. They're not necessarily experts in the way government works. I don't know who they interviewed to write this report. Had they interviewed Chief Norton or me, they would have heard, there's an office that can publish that something's being sold illegally, can actually pursue legal action against a business that is illegally selling something. It's the Office of Consumer Affairs within the District Attorney's Office. I would suggest, counsel, that as part of your motion tonight, you might encourage the mayor to write a letter to the district attorney, say, do something about this. All this attention is being put on city councils to do something you can't really do and aren't very well equipped to do. There's an office in the county and there's an elected official who ought to be doing something about it. And all this energy being directed toward you and every other city council ought to be directed to that elected official and tell her it's her job to stop the sale of something that's illegal. There's my suggestion. It's kind of fun being up here.
I think that's an excellent idea.
All right. Um, other thoughts, uh, city council, uh, anybody else have other comments? All right. So, um, let's see. So the suggestion that a minute ago we were agreeing with about the bicycle coalition on the website. Are we now suggesting we shouldn't link to the Marin Bicycle Coalition because?
My, my takeaway is three actions. One is we're. My, my takeaway is three actions. One is we're approving the report.
Right.
Two is we can link over to something Marin Bicycle Coalition has already. And three is you write a letter.
All right. Okay, uh, are we all on the same page with that?
Yeah, I, I think four would be that we continue as council members with our, with our other colleagues to support the Police Officers Association. To, um, to try to, to try to work through how many other opportunities we can to help you with this. Um, and if it's us working with the schools or whatever, um, I want us to be, um. We're very supportive of our law enforcement in our community and we want to make sure that the kids are safe. People who walk on our roads and walk on our paths are safe. And so recommendations you all come up with, I'd be interested in helping implement.
Okay, and, and number five is to thank the chief, uh, and his staff for, for all the work that they're doing. Because they, you guys are really going, going be above and beyond on this issue and, and we all really do appreciate it. So thank you. Um, okay, so, uh. Assistant City Manager, do we need a motion on this?
So I heard a couple of things of, to the grand jury report. Um, Councilmember Andre brought up that staff, that maybe there was some interest in staff amending the response to the grand jury. To say that the, keep essentially what was, um, brought up at the meeting the same. But to say that it requires further analysis and that we're still looking into the issue. Staff can make that change and send it to the grand jury. If we do, we have to provide a follow-up report on what we've done on that. We can certainly do that. That's just more staff work and it does trigger an additional response to the grand jury, um, at a later date. So some clarity around if you'd like to send the report as is or change. We'd go through the recommendations and what recommendations you'd want to change from. Does, will not be implemented because not warranted, which again is a term that the grand jury provides to jurisdictions when you respond to these things. To the responsive requires further analysis.
All right, and, uh, from my perspective, I, even though it is a little abrupt. Um, I think it makes sense to keep the report as it is, only because I don't want to put more burden on our staff. I think our staff is overworked as it is and I think their resources could be, uh, used for other purposes, so. Um, that's where I'm leaning, but I'm willing to, to hear other comments.
Yes, I would concur that if this requires follow-up reporting from staff. I think the fact that, you know, we are, I think it's more important that we're actually doing something than, you know, writing another follow-up report to the grand jury report. So.
Okay, ha- having then, okay, so can, can I get a, do we need a motion for that then?
I'll, I'll move that to, uh, approve the, um, response as written.
Hey, can I get a second? Okay, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Nick Handel.
Yes, and then I believe there are a couple of other, uh, directives towards staff. I don't think we need a motion for that as long as staff is clear on, on our thoughts.
That was the letter to the Consumer Affairs Department of.
By the mayor, yes. Uh, and, uh, the website, uh, if we could work with the Marin Bicycle Coalition. Uh, to have a link going to them for additional information, uh, regarding, uh, bike safety. Or however, however staff chooses to put that language.
Okay, city attorney feel that's sufficient?
Was it, was there a? Right, I think Chief Norman said he was gonna put that on the Marin Bicycle Coalition. Okay, so we can link.
So to publish it on the CMPA website.
Okay. Um, and was there a fourth? All right. Okay, having any reason I should not close that business item at this point. Hearing none, that business item is closed. Rolling into business item number nine, which is adjournment. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.